Okay, eight o'clock sharp. Sometimes I get in the habit of dialing into a Zoom call one or two minutes late, so try not to do that, everybody, but it's tricky. So, yeah, this is the Deschutes County Legislative Update Meeting, almost a week after the session. It must have been pretty wild and frantic at the end there. Doug, thank you all for what you've done here for us. To say at this point, let's just stand by just for a few more moments, see who else can join us. I don't see any other commissioners yet.
Commissioner Chang mentioned to me yesterday he was planning to attend, so he may just be running a minute or so behind.
Okay. So, yeah, we can get going here now, let's just say that was our moment. So Doug, thanks for joining us. Yeah, take it away.
Great. Well, thanks, everyone. Happy Friday, almost the Fourth of July. The session is over. It ended in a rocky fashion. I've never seen Love City have said in quite this way. I've seen them end in a lot of ways. 2:00 AM, 4:00 AM, August 28th, July 31st. But this was unique in that somehow the Senate leadership didn't know how to count votes. And so on the final day, not one, not two, but three bills failed on the Senate floor, which almost never happens even during the session. But to happen on the final day was pretty remarkable, I guess I'd say. The first bill that failed was House Bill 3414, which dealt with land use required cities to grant variances as requested by builders in a number of areas, set up an enforcement office for DLCD to come after cities, and ostensibly counties that didn't follow the law. And then the third portion of the bill would have granted a one-time exception for cities to expand their UGBs into urban reserves in a very rapid fashion without approval of the state or the county or anyone else for that matter. So, and then the fourth thing, and I think the thing that killed the bill, which is pretty fascinating for anyone who follows land use, is they, on last Monday, the governor's office removed the protection for intergovernmental agreements for land that borders multiple cities, really only applies to one area, and that's the Stafford area, up in the Portland area, where Wilsonville, Toollerton, Westland, and Lake Oswego all border this unincorporated urban reserve. And they finally, after 20 years of fist fighting, agreed that they're going to jointly plan for it. And this bill took out that, basically overrode that IGA. And that was kind of the straw that broke the camel's back. And so 3414 went down. I'm sorry for the long-winded explanation. It's interesting for political insiders, probably not interesting for anyone else, but it kind of explains the session. So once 3414 went down, the sponsor of the bill, Senator Mark Meek from Clackamas County, got upset and walked out. So now we have Democrat walkout, as well as Republican walkouts. And he didn't come back. So he walked out, did not come back to the chamber the rest of the day. So the next bill, which was an insurance right to sue, a right to sue your provider or your insurance company in certain medical cases, supported by the Travelers, that didn't have the votes with Meek gone, and so that failed. And then the other bill, which would have impacted the county, and we were falling pretty closely, was House Bill 3013. 3013 is a bill that the pharmacists were asking for, and it would have imposed, did a variety of things, but the objectionable provision from at least the city's standpoint was imposed a $10 per prescription fee for any public employee, any community college employee, any higher education employee, any K-12 employee, any CCO member. So if you have a chronic condition and are requiring five to seven prescriptions per month or even more, that's a $10 fee per prescription every single month. So it could have been, you know, close to $1,000 or well over $1,000 for someone on a fixed income. And that really, that was a close vote in the House and then failed by two votes in the Senate. So long-winded explanation to say that the final day was very dramatic. There were numerous recesses in both the House and the Senate on Sunday, where they were trying to round up the votes and trying to, the governor was in the building on 3414, trying to strong-arm voters. She didn't persuade anyone in the Senate, and so that was the beginning of the and the catastrophic end of the session. However, having said that, for us, for Deschutes County, we largely avoided that. We got the IDU bill passed early. As you recall, for those of you who are involved, there was quite a bit of, there were quite a few people urging us to amend 644 once it got to the House. And we stood our ground and said, we don't want to amend it. We want to get it through into the governor. You can come back next session with your amendment. So we convinced Lane County and others not to amend the bill. Thank goodness we did, because it got through, got to the governor, has been signed into law. So that's good. Victory number one. Victory number two is the courthouse. So we got $15 million for the courthouse. Most capital construction projects either were not funded at all, and there were dozens of, or if not hundreds of projects requested by cities and counties, they got zero funding. So we should feel good that we got funding. And most of the others were cut by 50%. So, you know, we asked for $25 million, but we got 15. That's more than 50%. So I view that as a victory. And then there were other small little victories, impacts funding, you know, we can go through. I'll go through them in more detail on the 12th. So those are the wins. The misses were a bit surprising, I'd say. You know, public health, you know, came up short in a big way. And, you know, we were closely involved, the public health advocates during the session, and Let's Say Sure did not, you know, follow through on their commitment, you know, that they made a session or two ago for modernization of the public health system. So that was very disappointing. And then in a number of areas, behavioral health, especially behavioral health workforce was not funded. There was a $50 million allocation for infrastructure, for mainly for residential care in the budget, and there were other items that we can go into, but you know, that wasn't funded. One of the bills we talked about, House Bill 3126, which was Tana Sanchez's bill dealing with, you know, setting up a system for getting high-level kids out of the ER and having a system in place in communities to be able to address those needs. That didn't get funded and wasn't passed, which is surprising since it was one of the co-chairs' bills. So there were hits and misses. I think we had a lot of good successes in the session, but there were some things that we supported that didn't get through. But everyone in every county in the behavioral health and public health sphere is disappointed with those results. So just really quickly, next steps. So no special session in July, because they did finish the session after the Republicans came back. There may be a special session right around the legislative days in September. It is possible the governor, who was lobbying hard for House Bill 3414, the land use bill that I mentioned earlier, it's possible the governor could ask for a special session on that bill around or on legislative days, which would make sense, so they wouldn't have to come back twice. And then she kind of captures the Republicans in the building during those days. And that's the third week of September. And then there will be interim hearings again in November, and then in January, bills will be dropped and we'll head into the short session, 35-day session, starting probably the beginning of February is my guess. That hasn't been set yet. I keep saying the last, but the last thing I'd say is I really appreciate our delegation. They all rolled up their sleeves and worked with us on a bipartisan basis to get things done this session. And they were great to work with. You know, all three of the commissioners were in the building a lot and saw our legislators. You know, all five of our direct legislators were, you know, talking to me daily, working with us, urging their colleagues to pass our bills. When we needed something and asked, they jumped into action. So I'm very happy with the response of all five, and I'll go into more detail on the 12th. So I think I'll stop there, take any questions and answer anything you might have.
Thank you very much, Doug. Anybody have questions? Robert?
Doug, I'm wondering, with the $15 million for the courthouse, this was general, I know it's general fund funded from the state. I know Christmas tree bills, it usually takes months before we actually see the money by the time they process all the contracts and everything. Do you know, are there any limitations or special streams attached with this funding for the courthouse? Because I know with bonded funds, you know, it's like, well, it can only be used towards your 40% or approximate percentage of that. But do you have any insight into restrictions or timing or anything on the courthouse funding?
Yeah, thanks, Robert. Very good question. And what I would expect is that DAS will write a contract that resembles what you would get from bond funding in your bond contract. You know, Let's Say Sure does this from time to time. The odd thing is they had extra bonding capacity that they left on the table. You know, one report, one committee, they said it was $97 million in unallocated bond funding. Another committee, I said, and the same person said it was $111 million. That will grow by the time we get to the 2024 session, because people continue to play the lottery and revenues continue to come in. So I don't know why they made a decision to split up the capital construction projects into general fund versus bonding. But I would expect that DAS will probably come to you with a contract that is similar to what they'd issue for bonds, just because it's the same type of project. But I mean, $15 million shouldn't be close to the 40% that you're spending, so I would, it shouldn't be close to 40% of what you're spending. So I don't think there should be any problem there.
Commissioner Chang? Doug, one of the pieces of 3414 that you discussed or mentioned was this one-time, small addition to urban growth boundaries. That was included there. I think that with the failure of that bill, you know, this session, we still have opportunities. Either when that bill moves again, if the governor, you know, demands a special session on it, or, you know, and this is one of the things I'd like to ask you in the short session next year. But you may be tracking that we have had a number of comp plan amendment and rezone applications on the immediate east side of the city of Bend, totaling a few hundred acres. And whether in some blanket bill that covers all the cities in the state or whether as another one-off bill, the Stevens Road tract kind of situation, I believe that the city is very interested in bringing those into the UGB. You know, if the 150 acres in 3414 had gone through, I think that's likely where they would have been looking. And, you know, so there's opportunities, I believe, to coordinate with the city of Bend on either through another 3414 or a one-off, you know, location-specific bill to look at those acres out there and think about an urban growth boundary expansion. And I just wanted to put that on the radar and ask about, what are the strategies to approach that? To wait for another 3414? Or to, you know, just try to do a, you know, a single location bill, whether that's politically easier or harder?
Yeah, Commissioner, thanks for the question, and very good question. There is a lot of discussion, even just in the last four days. I've been surprised how many people are still around and phone calls are ringing and emails are flying back and forth. The problem with 3414 is that the governor and her staff seem unwilling to negotiate at the end of the session. So I think that if I was in the governor's office, I'd say, hey, you know, obviously, we barely got a majority in the House and we lost in the Senate. We need to sit down at the table and work collaboratively. And so I think there is an opportunity for us to say, hey, we would like to work with you on this. The city of Bend was pretty involved in the negotiations, and the mayor came over and testified at least once. Maybe she testified once remotely and once in person. She flew over, testified, and then turned around and went right back on the occasions. But I, so I think it might be worth, you know, if that's something the commission wants to pursue, sitting down with the city of Bend. I know the city Redmond was interested in that as well, in getting Eric Cansler, who's the city's lobbyist, engaged. I know the League of Cities is also engaging. I assume AOC will engage. You know, one of the things that was left behind this session was housing infrastructure funding. You know, in Central Oregon, Redmond got North Point funding. But they were one of the few cities in the entire state that got any funding for housing infrastructure, which, you know, doesn't really make any sense if the governor says she wants to build 36,000 units of housing. You can't build housing unless you have streets and sewer and roads and, you know, all the basic infrastructure that needs to be installed. So I think that a variety of people are going to be working with the sponsors of the bill. So people like Maxine, Representative Maxine Dexter, Senator Casey Jama, Senator Meek, leadership, certainly working with Senator Canope, you know, he was heavily involved in this. So I think it'd be good to sit down if we have ideas for improvements. I think it's easier in a short session to get your bill included in a larger package than to go with a separate individual bill. Because in a short session, they have very limited time to do things. So it's probably more likely to pass if it's part of the larger package.
Thanks.
Commissioner Dare?
Doug, what about strategy for the biomass plant in short session?
Yes, thanks, Commissioner. That was House Bill 3003. That was a companion bill for the Juniper Management Stream Restoration Bill. That section of the bill passed with $2.6 million in funding. And, you know, we'll get those projects off the ground. The biomass tax credit that you mentioned would have been an effort to sustain in the program over the long term without having to go back to the legislature and ask for money every year. That did not pass, and one of the reasons the co-chair, the Revenue Committee, Finance Committee, Representative Nathanson, said to me as well, you didn't want to start the tax credit until 2025 anyway. So we still have, we can come back. And Representative Retschke was very helpful in this bill and said the same thing. A lot of these individual tax credits did not pass. A very limited number passed this session. But I don't think that there was necessarily opposition to it specifically. There was questions about the timing, you know, could a biomass plant, I mean, the biomass plant, even if it were built, wouldn't be up and running by 2025. Probably is 2026, 2027. So coming back in either 2024 or 2025 might make more sense.
Okay. What?
Go ahead.
What about the fact that we wrote the letter for the youth mental health facility to be built here? Is there any way that we can really push that back through short session? It's so needed. I just, I feel really, I'm glad we wrote the letter, said we really want one. Wasn't it only an ask of like $12 million or something? What is it that we can do in order to actually have that happen?
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner. It was like 11.8 million, so just about $12 million. And this is, this is a head-scratching moment for me, because I don't understand how something that is so important and is the bill sponsored by the co-chair of the Ways and Means Committee, one of the coaches, the House coacher, cannot pass. So there were many head-scratching decisions made by Ways and Means this session, and this was among the most head-scratching. You know, public health is another head-scratching issue. The failure to fund school mental health programs, which right now, after COVID, every school will tell you they are facing a crisis in school mental health, yet Let's Say Sure funded $0 from the recommendations of a group of 50 organizations and education experts. Special education, they did not fund the special education for the five-county area in the Northwest Portland area. So I think that if we get a good revenue forecast in the fall, in September, which it'll come out in August, but they call it September, and we get another one in January, maybe they'll feel more willing to allocate funding for these programs. But I think a letter from the county, maybe asking Representative Sanchez if she'd be willing to come and talk to us about this program and others that were left behind. I think, you know, she'd be willing to join us in the Zoom, or if she's in Central Oregon, I can give her a call and see if she's willing to come to the commission, meet with the commissioners. I think that would be a great idea to talk, not about just this, but about what about the behavioral health money left behind? What about the public health money left behind? So I will say, and sorry to go on so long, one of the big victories from Central Oregon's standpoint is we were able to restore 19.4 million for children's residential services like those provided by JbarJ. That $19.4 million will bring in almost an equivalent amount of federal funding. And what it allows the residential programs or behavioral rehabilitation services programs to do is to retain their staff. Right now, they have masters-level clinicians making $19 an hour. You know, that's not sustainable. So this allows them to get up to about $22, $23 an hour for those masters level, and about $19 for the bachelor's level. So that was a victory, a hard-fought victory that was in the Christmas tree bill.
No, that's great news. And JbarJ actually got Mac funding too, so I think they have like 2.6 million for that 15-bed facility they want to do in Redmond. So, and that, according to the executive order, has to be done by January. So great news. Ran into a couple people from JbarJ Monday, and they are thrilled.
Hey, Commissioner Chang?
I wanted to circle back on the Child Regional Psychiatric Emergency Center bill and mention that, well, Holly could tell you a little bit more about this. But we were already having discussions with St. Charles, which is the likely place where the center would be located, about hosting Representatives Proft and Levy for a, you know, essentially a tour to help impress upon them, you know, this is what happens to kids that come into the emergency department experiencing a psychiatric crisis. They, you know, frequently end up being boarded in the emergency department for three weeks. So, you know, on the idea of connections with Representative Sanchez, I think maybe we try to do that sometime in the latter half of 2023 and invite her over, you know, while the session is quiet, you know, while they're out of session, and there's a better chance that we could get her to come and take a look at that.
Yeah, that's, I know her well, and we'll talk to her soon, and we'll make that, we'll invite her, and we'll see if we can work on a date.
Great. Thank you, Doug.
And, yeah, well, whenever we have the big picture like this for Deschutes County, it also affects Central Oregon and Eastern Oregon. You know, sometimes this is the closest place for these higher-level services for almost two-thirds of the state. So I'm just, from a legislator's point of view, it's probably good for them to understand that this is a service area for a lot of people.
And so Holly, Holly's been, you know, Holly has been coordinating with St. Charles on that. So we'll, you know, as planning for this unfolds, we can all get in the loop and she can activate those. She can activate the scheduling on their end for this.
Great.
Great.
So as mentioned, Doug will come see us in two weeks in a live, in-person session. So that's where we'll be able to really start to digest what happened between now and then and talk about, you know, what strategic things could we be doing in the next three to six months in preparation for a short session or e-session also. Any other thoughts, department heads, topics that have come around?
Chris?
Thank you, yes.
There we go.
Do you want to point out, House Bill 2101, the Fund Exchange Bill, did pass. So we're pretty happy about that. Had to push back on ODOT, but they came around and got it done. And, yeah. We all get to have state money instead of federal dollars, so.
Thank you. Chris, is there a kind of a rule of thumb about level of funding relative to, you know, needs for future capital? Because just the concept of maintenance first and then capital, what's your rule of thumb for where we're at?
So from a statewide perspective, ODOT has a severe operations and maintenance shortage. In addition to, you know, capital, big capital project issues associated with, you know, what's going on in the Portland area, I-5 Bridge, things that we read about in papers. I expect in 2025, there to be a pretty significant conversation about another funding package that will mostly be sold on the backs of what I just described. It'll be key for us to make sure that funding packages that move forward also include, you know, that 50, 30, 20 split, so that local government, you know, isn't left behind, you know, in that discussion. Because time is our enemy when it comes to inflation and deterioration of our system. And we're not immune to, you know, those same types of issues eventually.
What about capital on the horizon from federal infrastructure dollars? Is there, is that an exciting place to have a discussion or not?
Yeah, I mean federally, you know, we're not going to see anything after the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed last year, year before last. It's a pretty robust package, but those grants through various programs are starting to emerge. Unfortunately, it's not a county rural system-centric package. It's more urban-based. But there are opportunities for us. Of course, we just read, I think, City of Bend got a substantial grant to fund Hawthorne Crossing, and then some state dollars as well. Yeah, so it's
Projects around us more than projects that we would implement.
Correct. But still, we'll participate. You'll see a grant application at the next board meeting to get funding for a safety study update. So, but it's not a big-hitting federal package for rural systems, per se. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just point out really quickly that that was a hard-fought battle. I know the commissioners testified, Chris, you testified. It made a difference. Not an awful lot got through the Joint Committee on Transportation, and the Joint Committee on Transportation spent most of the session having hearings and doing nothing. And there was quite a bit of chaos in that committee. The co-chair had a heart attack and was gone for three months. They didn't appoint a replacement co-chair for two and a half months. And there were big fights on the I-5 Bridge, the Columbia Crossing Bridge. And then the tolling issue really blew up in Let's Say Sure. And so the tolling for, just FYI, the tolling for 205 in the Abernathy Bridge has now been delayed by the governor. And then ODOT announced this week that they're going to not add the third lane on 205, which is why they were supposed to toll in the first place to grow capacity. So Let's Say Sure's in that area are not particularly happy. But as Chris mentioned, this is something we've got to track closely. There is a huge funding deficit for ODOT going forward. So it's really going to be a challenge to come up, you know, especially as people move to more fuel-efficient, hybrid electric cars. The gas tax revenues will continue to go down, and because people aren't commuting to work, people are working from home. That's one of the reasons that revenue of gas tax revenues is down. So it was a complicated situation, but something I think as a county, we've got to keep an eye on going forward.
I've got an electric vehicle registration coming up after the first four years of ownership. So I'll let you know how big that number is. I think it's going to be big. Holly?
Hi, Doug. I'm thrilled about the impact spending, obviously. I've been watching that closely. I'm curious if you've heard, because I'm also very aware that there's several counties that were awarded some upfront costs in the Christmas tree bill to open their stabilization centers. So I'm just curious if you've heard anything about what the intent of the $10 million, was it to continue funding existing projects? Are they going to be opening it up more broadly? What's the scuttle on that?
Yeah, Holly, I have to say, I haven't heard of the specifics. I know it's $10 million through the Criminal Justice Commission, I believe, is what I'm looking at on my computer screen. But I haven't heard the allocation plan yet, but I can look into it and get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts? So this is our follow-up, uh, within one week of the legislative session. Bill Kuhn.
Yeah, Doug, I was curious if House Bill twenty nine eighty passed. That was that middle income housing, uh, infrastructure funding bill?
No, let me, let me just check and see where it ended up. Um, that was less it snuck by in the last two days. No, it, it didn't pass. And it goes back to something that I said earlier, which is uh, housing infrastructure was left behind in, in this session, which is kind of, again, another one of those head scratching moments. I know the league of cities is looking into, uh, as one of their counters to the governor on thirty four fourteen, because cities came out en masse against thirty four fourteen, uh, which they didn't want to. Ariel Nelson, who's, uh, an excellent lobbyist for the league of Oregon cities. You know, really worked hard to work on modifications of the bill, but at the end, end of the day, uh, that, that most cities could not support it. So one of the things that has been suggested in groups that I've been in the last few days is, um, something like twenty nine eighty um, and specific housing infrastructure packages. There were many cities in some counties that asked for infrastructure funding that didn't get them. So could we put together a, uh, you know, a, a package, you know, we had a drought package, we had a homeless and housing is almost as a housing package, uh, could we have a, a housing infrastructure package? So that's something that, you know, we hope that we might be able to push through in twenty twenty four, which is only seven months away. Right around the corner.
Uh, Nick.
Uh, thank you. I was just going to say, just as we do begin to think about twenty twenty four and anything else that may, uh, come up here in September or otherwise, just keeping a, a list or track of, uh, the interim work groups. Just so that we can be sure to allocate staff, time, et cetera, to those efforts and then, uh, follow up as needed. So, uh, I know that's often, as you said, seven months, I mean, bam, generally by September, we're, we're starting to see bills. And so, um, sometimes July is quiet, but maybe this July won't be, we'll see. So thanks. That's all.
Yeah, I think that's, I wrote that down and I'll look into it. And also I'll say that, you know, uh, sometimes the best eyes in yours are all of you. So if, if you hear of a work group, please let, let Cory and myself know that, that's happening and we can try to plug into it. Um, but, you know, Nick, as you say, pre-session filing is in September. So basically, uh, if we have a concept, we want to get introduced for twenty twenty four. And I, going back to what Commissioner Chang asked, do we have an individual bill or do we try to be in a package? You know, if we have a, a good idea, let's draft an individual bill, but then try to get that put in the package. So I'm, you know, modifying my recommend, earlier recommendation, but, you know, that gives us the opportunity to work with legislative council in the fall to get our specific language drafted, which then could be rolled into a larger package. So, well, we can talk about that more. I know some concepts have already come up, but, uh, anything that we'd like to pursue in twenty twenty four, let's, um, let's make sure we're talking to our delegation.
Okay. Good discussion. Uh, anything else? Uh, Whitney, any, any thoughts on agenda?
Just Commissioner Devon, as you noted, Doug will be back before the board on July twelfth for a formal wrap up in the board's business meeting. So if there's any additional items that the board or staff would like to have, um, you know, updates on, certainly coordinate with Jen um, and I, and we're happy to facilitate that with Doug, um, and we'll look forward to that, that formal conclusion of this legislative session during that update, um, in a few weeks.
How about, uh, just an idea on the fly here, but how about, uh, maybe putting a little list together, the topics that we spoke about today? Any other department head topics to follow? And the vision would be kind of getting the one pager for Deschutes County topics. Uh, and then, you know, we could prioritize a little bit too, just, you know, while it's fresh, while we're thinking of the, the next things that we want to advocate for. You know, so then we start to get a little organized. Commissioner Chang.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a nuts and bolts question as we're, as we're wrapping up this session and looking towards future sessions. Um, Doug, what is, what, what is our contract with Doug, uh, look like in the non-session months of the year?
Um, essentially it's, it's a slightly lower amount, but it's business as usual. So, um, you know, it used to be before twenty ten, when the voters enacted uh, the constitutional change to, for annual sessions, used to be that the interim was really eighteen months and things really slowed down. But I will tell you with, with annual sessions, it really never slows down. And the interim, as I said, when I first met with you uh, many, many months ago, I said, the interim is more important than the actual session. And, and it really is. I mean, it's, the interim is the opportunity, uh, for me to go out and meet with people in the field. Uh, cause we're kind of locked into that, this session, a, a tiny space, um, in the Capitol. But during interim, you know, I'm in, in the car and, and visiting people as much as I possibly can and getting out to see let's letters. Not just our Deschutes County let's letters, but, you know, trying to get over to Baker and Burns and Heffner and Medford and the coast, et cetera. So, um, I think it's, I think the next few months are important. So we'll put together some recommendations on inviting people in, uh, you know, there's already talk about, um, inviting legislators to a summit in central Oregon. I know I've talked to, uh, a few of you about that concept, just kind of in passing, uh, but like they do with the coastal caucus. Um, you know, trying to invite let's letters from the west side to come over. So a lot of good opportunities for us in the interim, but it, it's pretty, I expect to be pretty busy.
Thank you. I'm envisioning a barbecue where we get some legislators all together and, uh, you know, just have a good discussion. So maybe the summit slash barbecue. Okay. So, uh, good information today. I don't know that we have anything else. Uh, so yeah, here and then we'll see you in person in a couple of weeks, Doug, and thank you very much for what you've been doing.